Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, I'll call it to order and our pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Earl Call, Bruce Anfield.
Tom Fisher.
Kimberly McNairy.
Matt Ribber.
And before we really get rolling here, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Lieutenant Leslie Smith, who passed away on March 26. Is there any public comment? We'll open the volunteer pension board meeting at 10:33. We have the approval of the March 21 minutes. Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Any other business for the volunteer pension board chief?
No, sir.
All right, we'll go ahead and close that meeting and open the regular Board of Commissioners' meeting at 10:34. The consent agenda is before us. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes March 21 meeting minutes, staff reports, financial reports, vouchers? Yes, that's it.
Someone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this thing on?
Discussion. I have a couple of questions, of course. Chief, your report was... Maybe just enlighten us about our new hires. And we're going to talk about the annexation issue later. I guess we're not. Sorry? I can put it in a new business. Okay, but we went through a hiring process.
Yes, sir. We, Monday of the 15th, we onboarded five new FTEs. They're currently in day four of new employee orientation. They're a different group that we've hired, I'd say, the past couple of hires, a little older, some different work experience, very little structural firefighting experience, which is becoming the norm in the fire service. It was, for years, we would hire people with years of experience, and now we're not. And this group certainly reflects that. They do have, one has, I would say, zero fire experience at all. First time he put on an air pack was Tuesday morning. Three of them have wildland experience, two of them extensive wildland experience, working for like federal hotshot teams and heli rappel teams and heli-tack teams. One was, I believe he's the federal hotshot of the year, a couple of years ago. So pretty studs, I guess you could say, for lack of a better word. And then they have different educational experience. Some of them have, most of, I think, four of the five have college degrees. Three of those are bachelor's of science in hard sciences. And most of them are making, I should say, three of them are making what I would say would be mid-adulthood career shifts. They had some interaction with the fire service at some point that impressed them and made them realize that firefighters are actually doing something, they're doing good, they're accomplishing their task. And then they reflected on their own career path and realized that they were kind of in a land of make-believe, I guess I'd say. That's my words, not theirs. But just were really impressed by the professionalism and how the firefighters attacked the task that they were working on and decided that that's something that they wanted to do as well. So I'm excited for them. They leave for the academy on May 2nd. They'll return July 25th, and then they'll have another two-week intensive EMS course before they go onto the floor, and then they'll be off and running in August. So, great group, looking forward to getting to know them better. But so far, they're working with some selected mentors on getting ready for the academy, covering everything from how to don and doff gear and equipment to how to shine your boots and fold a flag and have a flag ceremony and get prepped for the academy. So looking forward to see how they develop.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Just a quick question follow-up. Where does that leave us on staffing?
We are today.
Today?
When they're out of the academy, we'll be fully staffed. Today. We'll see what happens tomorrow.
Lots of assumptions in that, but that's fantastic.
Why, that was, the chart is full. Let's put it that way. So.
Okay, well, that's good.
All right, so I will read the financial numbers in. Revenue for March, $735,105.79. Expenditures for April, $895,451.75. Direct deposit payroll, $430,351.54. Payroll taxes, $103,385.99. Benefits voucher, $260,327.12. Monthly expenditure voucher, $100,890.75. Capital projects, $496.35. All in favor of approving consent?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you. Commissioner meeting reports.
I'll start. I attended the Blaine City Council meeting, and I'll go to their next one on Monday, and had the opportunity to talk to their...
City manager?
City manager, yes. About 12-foot building, or about having buildings over five stories and keeping the fire department within that loop.
Was it received well?
It was, yes.
Did they understand?
They do. They were glad, and the public works person and also the mayor were also standing there. So it plugs in everybody's ears. And we'll do it again and do it again and do it again and just keep it in the forefront.
Right. I mean, I know the developers are going to be there going, we want to build, we want to build, and we don't want to have sprinkler systems and we don't want to have parking garages that are protected and blah, 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 and we want less parking and higher buildings. And sometimes we get left out that loop.
Right, right. And that's what I addressed with him. Still working on the levy-lid-let community meetings. I have several different pockets of people I've been talking to and trying to get facilities and also assisted in helping put together the pro committee and moving forward with that.
Which we will discuss later here when we will create that committee.
Yep.
Hi.
Go ahead, sorry.
I've been involved in some of the community issues with the abandoned and disrepair buildings. Blaine is finally being extremely proactive. I don't know if you all noticed that they're tearing some of the buildings and properties down. My question is, do we have involvement in identifying any of the fire hazards and any of the abandoned building issues around the town that I can bring to the city's attention?
I'm not able to answer that, but I will get with Fire Marshal Nielsen and ask him and get you that answer. Sorry.
I started pushing for this, I think Jenny saw the post initially, like six months ago? Seven months ago?
Yeah.
And was originally told at the time that the city wouldn't do anything about it. And I was thinking they were concerned about the slippery slope precedent it would set. But looks like they're taking it seriously now, and I think this is an opportunity for us to get a foot in the door with some of our fire marshaling. Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, and I would hope or suspect that maybe the crews at 61 might be able to help identify those higher-risk abandoned structures that, I know, Chief, you used to say we were all waiting for that one to go up at some point. I think there was one down by 69s that finally took off. Yeah, I'm kind of curious. It's county, but the one there at Birch Bay Linden and Blaine Road that used to be a thrift shop and was a coffee shop before that, and it looks like it's going to become part of the roundabout. That seems like an abandoned building for something. Anyway, that's excellent. And a lot of that is, you know, safety for our people, too.
Exactly.
You know, these things catch on fire and floors are rotted out of them and bad things happen. We can get a, at least a watch list going.
Yeah.
Mr. Crawford, enlighten us on the fire commissioners from the county.
Yeah, so the declaration of protest is what it says here. It wasn't really a protest. The commissioners got together as a whole and sent off a letter of repeal asking the county council to repeal their decision of the document that was put forward. I think everybody got a letter in the packet. If you didn't, I sent it to you the day that we sent it to the council. Council came back, took a vote, five to two, not in our favor. So they're going to move forward with their, they're looking at consolidating and finding out where the money from the EMS levy goes and this, that, and the other. They want to get some eyes on it. So they have sent it out to a firm. I understand the firm's going to come back and it's going to take anywhere from a year to a year and a half to get the final reading on that. So it's a ways out, but they may be reaching out to different departments trying to get a hold of budgets and operating procedures and things like that. So it is moving forward, and again, it was voted down. So thank you, County Council.
Well, yeah, the whole point of this 225-page study was to create some momentum to study the fire districts and how we should maybe save money and consolidate and do all that, which is not their job because we're separate political entities. And for some reason, they missed that. I think there was some confusion that because they have EMS money and they give us 1% or 2%, 2% to 3% of our budget is from that EMS money, that they think they can run our departments. And I disagree, and so do all the other chiefs and commissioners, who unfortunately weren't involved at all in the 225-page document. Not one question, not one recommendation, not one anything as to what our thoughts might be. And so, kind of a bad way of doing business, in my opinion. We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens. I mean, if they want to figure out the EMS piece, that's great. Thank you. We met with Liz Loomis again. We're moving forward. We've got the, we've done a couple of presentations. The chief has done his PowerPoint presentation for the levy lift lift information. And we have another one coming up next month. In fact, it will be at noon right after our meeting. So next month, we're going to have to speak through the meeting. To get to Birch Bay sixty-three, they're gonna, we're going to do the presentation in the bay. So that those people in the community can see the condition of the fire station. So although we're going to move the apparatus out, we're not going to like super duper fix all leaks.
Can we have the fire truck spraying water on top of the building?
Have a master stream. I didn't see it here. Sorry. Anyway. So we had those meetings. What else did we? Oh, and then I, we've, I've been meeting with people for the pro committee. So we have established three people who are interested in being on that committee and we'll talk about that later on. Local one oh six.
Good morning. A few things, as Chief mentioned, we have five new hires that get the floor, so there's been a lot of help from a lot of individuals. So appreciate all that. They're currently operating with Steve Latham. He usually does the onboarding process, so kudos to him. He does a good job. We're still working on negotiate, finalizing some negotiations for the battalion chief position. We have a meeting next week. Promotional assessment coming up in May 2nd, I think, May, yeah, May 2nd. And then we're getting into the busy season, so we're going to start rescheduling overtime for our overtime procedures. That's all I've got for you right now.
Unfinished business, Birch Bay Station sixty-three, phase one project update.
Slow as usual. Been working with the attorney on hammering out what that RFQ for a project manager might look like. So that's moving slowly forward. And that's, that's really all I have to report on phase one. I will say I might be dragging my feet a little bit watching the economy because the more interest rates go up, the more it's going to cost us, so. The projections are not awesome right now, so we might, waiting might, I know trending better and now it's all of a sudden not. And so I don't know if that's a board decision, but I feel like I got some responsibility in that, so I want to make sure that we strike at the right time. Because we don't want to lock in an interest rate too early and then have an election and have the bottom drop out of interest rates and be paying an inflated price for something we can't. We will not be able to refinance for ten years once we lock in, so. It's kind of a big deal, so.
When do you think we'll have a, an answer on the consultant, construction manager?
Knowing my luck, probably by one o'clock this afternoon.
Okay.
And if so, I will just, sorry.
Well, I know that, that these folks are gearing up. This is their busy season and so if there is someone available, they might be available now and not next month.
I will not wait. I'll move forward under the assumption that the board's going to, I'll be in contact with you and, but I'll move forward with the assumption the board wants to do this. This, it looks like this kind of personal agreement can, can't be signed by me. It would have to be signed by the board. So I would have everything ready for you in May so that we could go through the selection process and have things narrowed down. Ready to sign in May, not still in process.
Cool. Station sixty-two is, how did our engineer plan those things go?
I think things have been submitted to the city. We got a preliminary thumbs up. They're also bringing on their commercial plans examiner person. So that's, we're getting, we're getting an initial thumbs up from him. All things are moving forward. Ready to go in July and the gutters have been closed.
Nice.
They were pretty bad.
So what's the projection on that then? If we're able, if we're able to start moving forward, when do we anticipate it being habitable?
That I haven't got from Bob yet. But my assumption is, looking at the seventy-two project, three months, two to three months. It's not a huge.
I think it was a three-month project, assuming the stairs. I mean, the, the hope is to put a metal stair case on that and I don't know if there's a bunch of prefab stuff for that or assembly on site, but so that it doesn't rot and fall off again.
And our, our timing for that and the idea is that we'll be able to move some staff into that if we have to?
You have to vacate sixty-three.
And time-wise, it would be then premature since we don't really have any type of forward momentum. Would we still be staffing there if we can't move out of sixty-three?
Well.
I know that's our goal eventually.
We, the goal is to, the, the anticipation is that the levy will pass and that's where that aid car is going to go.
Right.
We're going to fast-track the hiring. God, it would take a little bit of labor negotiations, which I'm sure the union would be up for, but we might try to put that car on, that aid car on for twelve hours. Soon as we get the green light from the levy, we get our new people back and staffed up, there might be, we might have the capacity once high-vacation season's over as we hit, say, October, we might be able to staff that car twelve hours a day.
Okay.
In which case it'll, it'll come out of there. I want to make sure we honor the commitment we made to the community, right? And but it's going to take to hire more, do the training. It's not, it's not, it's not a rubber stamp process, so it's going to take a little bit to get them up and, up and running. Anticipate. And the other thing is, if, if we have some sort of catastrophic failure of sixty-three, that, that they have to come out of there and right now, that's the place to go. There's definitely, you know, there's some, amongst the higher ranks in the department, there's some concerns about response times from sixty-three or sixty-two to say to I-five. So we're looking at how do we mitigate that, if there is a way to mitigate that. But sixty-two needs to be staffed. What Commissioner McMurray was in the station yesterday. We had five calls going in sixty-three's area, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three's area all at the same time. Three of them required medics. One was a VLS transport.
In terms of the response times, are, are we then also involved somehow in the plans for the peace portal? Railway construction? Because that's going to be closures and diversions.
That's so far down the road. I mean, we, we threw our hat in the ring. They know our name. And they'll have to, you'll see, like with any annexation, with any kind of large project like that, they're, they have to reach out to us. They're, it's, we're on a checklist. So we will be, but we haven't heard, I haven't heard anything from,
Okay.
you know, an anticipated start date and anything like that, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Think of that, that other back way through the neighborhood to cross the tracks at
Loomis Trail?
No.
Oh, the neighborhood?
Davie?
Dodd. Go down Dodd.
What's the cross street there that comes out of?
Hughes.
Hughes. Yeah. Anyway, that's a, a slow roundabout, but if, if they close that whole intersection, they're probably going to have to route all traffic through there.
Actually, they've done it before. They, they have used that for short periods of time before. And the neighborhood doesn't find.
I'm sure the neighbors are going to love that.
It's going to be a mess.
Yep. Yep, yep. All right. Capital purchasing policy. That was the wonderful long book that you sent us.
Using the document. Yes, sir.
Is there any, we need to approve that?
That's the whole.
Are there any concerns?
Not from staff.
And that was written, reviewed by legal?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any?
Mr. Paxton and Mr. Davis have both looked at that document.
Okay. So it's up to date, up to speed? And, and what is this going to do for us that we currently aren't able to do?
This is going to, sorry, this is going to take a twelve-year-old purch, you know, purchasing policy, update it. And for me, it's going to tell me and staff exactly how we buy large things. As opposed to the old, the old policy referred to a lot of RCWs, which if you've read any RCWs, they're clear as mud. This spells it out. It breaks it down Barney-style, which for me is how I need things. It also will tell the auditor exactly how we do things and they can just match our process. Here's step one. This is what we did for step one. Here's step two. This is what we did for step two. It takes any ambiguity out of it. There is a danger in writing one that's this detailed, but in this case, the auditor gives me hives and to know that I was, that I'm able to audit myself by going step one, step two, it makes me feel much better.
Right. So we want a motion for us to approve the purchasing policy?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Moving second. And any other questions or discussion? I guess we've kind of brought the discussion and had the motion, but sorry. But Robert fools. Pass on that one. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Chief, for bringing that forward and hopefully it makes your life easier. CBA. Status?
We met, we met yesterday regarding the addition of battalion chiefs. The union had some concerns. They brought them forward and I will discuss them more in executive session, or I'd like to discuss them more with the board in executive session. We have another meeting scheduled. Things are positive. We're moving forward, but have another meeting scheduled for the third, twenty-ninth? Yep, twenty-ninth of this month. And we're, we're committed to a solution, so.
Okay. So for part of our levy lift lift, we need to create, or it is recommended for us to create a pro committee. We are not required to create a con committee. And has there been any communication to admin for a con committee? So we've, we've advertised it a minimum of three ways, like is required by statute, and we did the same for the pro committee and we've had some personal contact with, with three people who are interested in being on that committee. And what they do then is write the pro statement for the levy lift lift, which goes in the voter's pamphlet. And there's all kinds of rules and restrictions and timelines and things that have to be met for that. And the people who have expressed an interest in this were given that information. So we need to create that committee. And so I am going to recommend three names. Margot Savell, Wendy Tillman and Peter Bethel to be the pro committee for the levy lift lift statement in the voter's pamphlet. So I will move to create the committee with those three people. Thank you. So these people are, one is from Birch Bay Village, one is from Simiamu and one is from Laurelish, Wiser Lake. Tell me where it is. Wendy? Oh, I thought she was your. Oh. Contacts with Laurel.
Yes, yes.
Hails from the Laurel area, so. All right, so any questions, comments? The two hundred-page maximum statement has to be submitted by
Two hundred word.
I'm sorry. Did I say? Pardon me. Yeah, thank you. Two hundred word, which isn't very many words. And submitted, we have to submit their names by the third and they have to be
We, we do the third. They have to submit their statement by
And then if there is a con committee, then there's a rebuttal by the thirteenth or something like that. Hopefully, there's not. There typically isn't, but so. Been moved and seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. So you'll file the correct paperwork, yes, Chief? But we need to make contact with these three to get the exact spelling of their names that they want in the voter's pamphlet. And then we can have them fight out who wants to be the chairperson, right? I suspect it's going to be Margot because she has a strong background in journalism, both US and Canada nationally. So I think she knows how to write. But they all understand that we would like to see the draft before it gets finalized. Just to make sure that there aren't any errors in statements. Okay? Any other unfinished business? New business? So the Northern Heights update, Chief?
So, yeah, so the Northern Heights annexation, which affects District Four, not District Twenty-One, but with the contract, it all affects us. City of Bellingham moved forward with preliminary approval to study the Northern Heights annexation. Which means that this gives, council gave direction to department heads to do a study, to come back to council to tell them what the effects of the Northern Heights annexation would be. So PD, Fire Department, Public Works, Water, all those people, roads. They'll look at what the Northern Heights annexation. In talking with Chief Hewitt, there's additional, not instructions, but it's implied that they will also discuss does this trigger tweet twenty and if so, what are those impacts? And then each department will say yea or nay. Or, you know, we, we recommend, we can move forward with the annexation as recommended or this would be a hardship for us and this is what we need to offset it. I I'm not going to say what any, any one depart, I shouldn't say what any one department would say, but that goes on like, I think it's a hundred and twenty-day review period. So in the fall is when we'd find that out. They did set a tentative date for annexation of April first, twenty twenty-five. I don't think that Chief Hewitt put any money on that date. But that's what they said is a tentative date. And there are going to be opportunities for District Twenty-One and District Four to speak to the issue at like the county bounty review board, which is a required stop on this annexation train. And we can discuss the impacts. And that's where we would, or District Four could, if it does appear the annexation is going to move forward, they could say, well, we need, we want to mitigate this for a couple of years, a couple, three years with funds and it would, it's like on a sliding scale, Bellingham would give District Four money to ease them off the, the, the tax rules, ease that area off the tax rules, but that's too.
And the sixty percent issue that
It's not even an issue. That most of those, most of those homes when they were built, they had do not, no protest in the
No, no, I'm talking about that, that triggers Bellingham to have to take the
The confusing sixty percent, yeah, that, there's a, so in the state of Washington, if a city annexes sixty percent of a junior taxing district's area, then they have to eat the whole thing. To the best of my knowledge.
Or AV?
The AV, sorry. To the best of my knowledge, best of my understanding is, they put the statement in there, but nobody ever put the calculation in there. So nobody knows how to write the calculation. So nobody knows how to write the calculation, and nobody's ever challenged it. So is the, is it the AV from the first annexation? Is it the AV from the last annexation? When do you float the AV so that it's, if annexations take place over forty years, how do you figure out what's sixty percent? I will go on record and say that I've seen some internal Bellingham documents that show three different ways of calculating the sixty percent, and in two of them, they exceed it, and one they don't, so they choose the third that they don't.
Surprise!
It's honestly probably a legal case that somebody's gonna have to take on, but it's always junior taxing districts, so junior being funds-wise as well, it would probably have to, it's probably one of those things that would end up in the Supreme Court, and somebody would have to have the wherewithal to take it on. I don't know the District Four's that, that body. So the question continues. And that, and I've heard that from both our legal counsel and District Four's counsel, that basically just roll over and take it.
So, just the ramifications for us as a board would be, if, if Bellingham moves forward and, and takes all of the AV, D Four will again be in a position to not be able to pay for the services that we provide, and so that would be a horrible decision we would have to make, but if they can't pay for twenty-five percent of our budget, then we can't provide the service. And that's how this has been going on for years, and I hope we don't get there, but we need to mentally prepare ourselves that that could be a potential, if all the money's gone, we're not providing the service for free.
One thing I would like to say, just on the record, and especially because the unions had a tendency, is that no matter what happens, I don't, I would not, I can't forecast any loss of jobs, I would not forecast any loss of jobs. Bellingham's short two stations, if they eat District Four, they're short three, so the personnel are going to work somewhere.
Right, I mean, we prefer they work here.
Prefer they work here, but...
We would prefer to be in a position to upstaff and even add another station in District Twenty-One, in my opinion.
But, but I did, I just didn't want the talking points to be out there that...
Yeah, the talking points aren't, we're gonna, people are gonna lose their jobs, that is not, no, that's, that's not...
That's not an option, so...
But we may, at some point, have to cease contracting District Four if they can't pay their fair share, which is why they let them in. Any other new business?
If I could, just in your board packet, you'll see there's an annexation of about forty-five acres happening in District Twenty-One.
Yes, Linden.
Linden, Linden area, it's in the urban growth area. Currently, there's two residents. Tax rules about four-hundred-and-fifty bucks a year. It's, it's planned, it's a planned development that's been going on for years, and so it's, they're just letting us know that that's happening, and...
Okay. No significant impact to us currently, and once it's built out, we won't have the service.
That's not, not quite how that works, but, right.
All right. Correspondence, some nice articles on tenant Leslie Smith. I just wanted to recognize those individuals that participated in the stair climb, of which you were here, congratulations, nice job. Did you guys run in gear?
Yes.
Okay, no, not anymore. You have the option, right, to not wear your gear.
Right.
Because of the cancer-causing agency, the IFF came out. You don't have to, but anyway, nice job, congratulations. I did it once. That's all I needed to do, just once. All right, announcements, next meeting is the sixteenth, and that would be ten-thirty, unless we can bump it to ten. Or at least be race-ready to go with the quick agenda, because that's the Birch Bay Chamber of Lunch date.
You can bump it to ten, I don't...
That's not an issue?
I may not be there, that's, that's the deal, so...
Just drive past.
Yeah, well, I'm there, I'm there.
Well, you wanna keep it at ten-thirty, and then we can, whatever... Can you be here at ten-thirty?
Okay, should be here at ten-thirty.
All right, everyone else okay for the sixteenth?
Yep.
All right. The listener webinar on, tomorrow, tomorrow?
It will be recorded, and you will, we can, we will receive it about a week after, week to ten days, and I can send it out.
Okay, and this is just the procurement laws update?
It's a big procurement law update.
Yeah.
The stuff I've been talking about July, the big, the big effect, July effect.
Oh, 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 raising the, raising the limits on all that kind of stuff, that'd be worth, at least, getting the Reader's Digest version.
Right.
Okay. Birch Bay Chamber Lunch, who is going to attend that? You are?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Either of you? The, it's, it'll be at noon, right after our meeting next month. It's gonna be at Station Sixty-Three in the bay, it's, it's the opportunity for the chief to present the Levy-Lid-Lift information, they're gonna provide lunch, and I'm hoping there's gonna be about twenty, twenty-five people. Yes? You?
Probably done, gonna stick around.
Okay, so four of us?
And she needs the best five.
And it's, it's not a meeting, and it's no, nothing happening, so we can all four be there.
There are a chance they'll have more of these cruisin' coffee milkshakes.
Scott's going, so...
This and tiramisu, it's all I have.
Are you gonna send us the link to the webinar tomorrow?
Yeah, when they send it, then I will send it out.
Any other announcements? We, we do need to have an executive session, is there, so for next meeting, we'll just, we'll keep Station Sixty-Three and Sixty-two on the CBA, on...
The only other information I'd like for the next meeting is just the follow-up on the properties, 'cause I'll be following up with the city on that.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
So the derelict property issue?
Yeah, if they're enforcing, if they're actually doing code enforcement, I, I would like to have some type of input on that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great, it's a good open door.
Okay. And then you'll have gone to a couple meetings, and you can... All right. I'm gonna try to get with the Birch Bay Village, and then you're gonna try to get a drill for that marina? There's a hydrant issue down there in the village as to the closest one to the marina access. Both of them don't look good for laying supply lines, so, one of them has to go across the road and down a golf cart path, and the other one would require, depending on which dock was involved, laying across access to the docks, so... No, it's owned by the village. There is supposedly an eighty-inch main with three thousand GPM that goes right by there, and David Franklin, who is the manager now, is very interested in having a drill there, and actually having maybe the county fire marshal say, yeah, you guys need a hydrant over here, so that he can go to the residents and say, we need a hydrant over here, closer to like the boat ramp. But he would love to have a fire drill there, 'cause he experienced a marina fire in McConner, I believe, when he was a manager there, so he knows how hot fiber mask gets when it burns. And in exchange, hopefully, we would get a presentation for the... All right, we need an executive session, it's eleven-eighteen fifteen minutes?
Yep, yep.
So, and there will be no action taken after executive session, so for those of you who don't wanna be here any longer, thanks for attending.
Just got time to use the restroom, looks like.
Did he say anything, or did...
Scotty Brown, would you... Scotty Brown, would you...
So move.
On favor.
Aight.
Meeting is adjourned. 11:30 added.